Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting will convene at six o'clock P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard for from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion.
No, I'm just taking precautions.
Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six o'clock P M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teachers Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Please note that future board meetings will begin at six o'clock P M. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
President Ehrnberger will lead us in the O P S vision and mission statement.
The O P S vision is every student, every day, prepared for success. And the O P S mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Roll call, Mrs. Neelis Sprash.
Cassidy.
Here.
Ehrnberger.
Present.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow. Tealyn.
Here.
Seven present.
Mrs. Juarez did inform me that she would be absent from tonight's meeting, and Mr. Snow did indicate that he would be late at tonight's meeting.
I'd make a motion to excuse the absences of both board members.
There is a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of both Mr. Snow and Mrs. Juarez.
Second.
There is a second by Mr. Head.
Is there an opportunity to amend that motion?
What's your amendment?
To divide it. If that's okay with the maker of the motion.
We can always divide the question. Yep.
I would like to do that. Do we have to vote on it?
I think we do.
Okay. I move that we divide the question.
Okay, and there's a motion to divide the question.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Tealyn. Okay. The motion on the floor is excuse the absence of Mrs. Juarez. Is there a motion for that?
I think we've got a motion and a second for both now. It's just the questions divided. I think we can vote unless there's any other discussion.
Do you have any other discussion?
Do I need to repeat it again, or do we just go?
Yep.
Okay. No other discussion? No. Okay. Roll call, Mrs. Neelis Sprash.
Ehrnberger.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cradkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Motion passes with seven.
How many votes were there? Oh, excuse me, how many ayes were there?
Seven.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
And we can continue straight to the vote.
All right, now is there an absent to excuse? Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mrs. Juarez? Sorry, Mr. Snow.
So moved. Second.
Sorry about all of this. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow from Mr. Head and seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Cassidy.
No.
Ehrnberger.
No.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez. Cradkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Motion passes with seven.
How many votes were there? Oh, excuse me, how many ayes were there?
Seven.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
And we can continue straight to the vote.
All right, now is there an absent to excuse? Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mrs. Juarez? Sorry, Mr. Snow.
So moved. Second.
Sorry about all of this. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow from Mr. Head and seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Cassidy.
No.
Ehrnberger.
No.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cradkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Motion passes with seven.
How many votes were there? Oh, excuse me, how many ayes were there?
Seven.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
And we can continue straight to the vote.
All right, now is there an absent to excuse? Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mrs. Juarez? Sorry, Mr. Snow.
So moved. Second.
Sorry about all of this. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow from Mr. Head and seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Cassidy.
No.
Ehrnberger.
No.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cradkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Motion passes with seven.
How many votes were there? Oh, excuse me, how many ayes were there?
Seven.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
And we can continue straight to the vote.
All right, now is there an absent to excuse? Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mrs. Juarez? Sorry, Mr. Snow.
So moved. Second.
Sorry about all of this. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow from Mr. Head and seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Cassidy.
No.
Ehrnberger.
No.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cradkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. All righty, moving on now to school spotlight. Mr. Maskell, come on up. Or maybe I should say, come on down.
Thank you, President Holman.
Get rid of all this confusion up here.
Vice President Ehrnberger, members of the Board and Superintendent Logan, good evening. Tonight's O P S Proud Spotlight recognizes Mariana Cruz, Assistant Principal at Forestation Elementary, for being named the Metro Young Latino Professionals Educator of the Year. It is my privilege to welcome Ms. Cruz.
Is this thing on? Good evening, Dr. Logan, President Holman, Vice President Ehrnberger, and members of the O P S Board of Education. My name is Mariana Cruz, and I am the Assistant Principal at Forestation Elementary. My principal would kill me if I didn't say chugga chugga choo-choo. So I said it, I said it. So last year, I was actually informed that I was the educator of the year by, on behalf of the Metro Young Latino Professionals Association here. And so, one of the reasons that they said that I was their awardee is for community work that I did in two thousand twenty, because, you know, educators, we just have loads and loads of free time. But in two thousand twenty, my mom is a, was a meat pecker, she just retired last week. But in two thousand twenty, when the pandemic hit, there were a lot of, there was a lot of transmission, and they were actually one of the hardest hits. And because of that, they didn't really have a voice. A lot of times, they couldn't speak up. They weren't given masks. They were only given, like, hairnets. And so, we formed a coalition, and we were able to get them masks, make sure that they were covered, and make sure that they had, like, a safer work environment. And aside from the, you know, from my day job, they said that my ability to serve immigrant youth and communities here within our district is one of the big reasons why I was their chosen person. So when I heard about this, I was like, oh, my gosh, what an honor. I have not received anything like this. And I thought about, you know what, how special it is to me. Not only do I work in this community, but I live in the community. And being nominated as someone from the community, it's like our own folks saying, we see you, we see all the work that you're doing. So it's very special to me. I've been here in the district since two thousand eleven, P K twelve officially. So I've been everywhere from Mars Middle, Central High, Gomez, Forestation, Jackson Elementary, and each place, I'm very lucky to take a piece of it from my heart. Wherever I go in the district, and even here, I'm very lucky to get greeted with hugs, and that's very special for me. And I think that's pretty much it.
Well, welcome and congratulations to you. We're so excited and so proud of you.
Thank you. If I may add one thing, my mom's watching, and my baby too, at home. My mom doesn't speak English, so I just want to say, mommy, y papi también muchas gracias, los quiero mucho.
Say hi to your baby too.
Yeah, and Natalia and Lee, love you guys. Thank you.
Wait, don't leave yet, come back up, come back up. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
First of all, congratulations again. Lo mereces mucho, ya sabes. The, first of all, you have a sick baby. I do know that, because you were supposed to come last week to the destino dinner and couldn't come. And you were missed. You and Lee were both missed last week at the dinner. But just thank you for your persistence, for doing what was difficult to do, and for what you continue to do to support the Latinos in the southern part of our district with your leadership and your example of striving to do and to reach the goals that you have for yourself. So thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to echo the thank yous and the appreciation of being a community leader. It's really hard to step into those shoes sometimes and be an advocate for those without a voice. So I really, really appreciate what you've done on the educational side, and then also on the community side. So thank you very much for that.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. So congratulations, of course. I just wanted to thank you personally, because you, during two thousand twenty, you came into Gomez Heritage. And it was a rough time, obviously, in the thick of COVID. So I saw you in action as a parent, my little ones at Gomez. So just wanted to thank you, because I got to see firsthand, really, how she navigated that school. Her and the leadership team there really did a fantastic job through a couple really tough years. So just wanted to personally say thank you, from a parent perspective, since I saw it firsthand at Gomez. So thank you, and well deserved, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Cruz, if you would like to come around and give us all a fist bump, then we have an A-plus O P S Proud Pin for you.
I clicked that, I did, I did. But then I clicked down there.
All righty, now moving on to Board and Superintendent comments. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Ehrnberger, members of the Board, those here in attendance and those watching the stream from home. Beginning with tonight's agenda, our consent agenda includes the proposed negotiated agreement with the Eastern Nebraska School Security Union Local Twenty-eight. We have two of their finest members here in attendance with us this evening. Safety is paramount for the Omaha Public Schools, and we appreciate the work of security staff throughout our district. Safety staff are often the first people you'll see when arriving on campus, and they contribute to our schools in many ways. We are happy to have this proposed agreement before our Board this evening. Also before you is an updated agreement with our contracted bus service provider. But back to security, really want to thank our security team throughout our district. So many things don't happen because of the great relationships that they have with our young people and the cooperative work that they do with school staff. So we're very excited for this agreement and know that you deserve it. Many of our security staff serve as coaches, they are pastors in our community, and community leaders in many other ways besides their work as security personnel in our school districts. For that reason and for many more, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Also before us today is an updated agreement with our contracted bus service, Student Transportation of America. The updated agreement accomplishes several things as we focus on providing safe, reliable trips to and from school for more than twenty thousand children. Pending approval, our district will increase route payments to S T A, allowing them to raise driver salaries. The updated agreement will require S T A to invest in expanded customer service support for families. This reflects the value we place on communication, timely communication with our families, especially if there's going to be a change in the bus route. Alongside these investments, however, is accountability. The agreement increases amounts for liquidated damages should our contracted partner not meet these agreed-upon expectations. Our next subject is much lighter. Remember, family teacher conferences began last week for Omaha Public Schools, starting with our high school students. Mid-level conferences take place this week. Elementary follows the following week of October twenty-fourth. Conferences allow our schools to engage directly with families, partnering for success. Visit Omaha Public Schools on social media. We've posted tips to maximize conference visits from students and teachers. And for our middle school parents, please don't, do not believe your child when they say that you do not need to come in for a parent conference. You do need to come in for a parent conference. It's the most important in middle school. I see some of our teachers giggling in the back. Speaking of family and community engagement, this past Saturday was South High's Fiesta Latina. Marching bands were also out bright and early at Burke Stadium for the Omaha Marching Invitational. And with Halloween coming, the teacher's favorite day of the year, we have South High, which will have the Nightmare on Elm Street, sounds crazy. Benson High will have the Fall Fest. And Bryan High, their much celebrated and lauded Boo Best. Boo Fest. Boo Fest? Boo. Boo Fest. All have additional family events for fall and Halloween coming up. Make sure to take advantage of those. And thank you to all of the people who provide treats and a fun time, a safe time, for our young people. Visit our district website, opes.org, for complete details. Thank you to our student leaders and staff who make these events possible. We are proud to be a central part of the greater Omaha community. And congratulations are in order for several folks. Camille Kane of Lewis and Clark Middle for advancing to the U.S. Skating Pairs Finals with the Omaha-area skaters. This is the first time a team from Omaha area has qualified at this level of competition in several years. And if you go to YouTube and you put in Camille Kane's name, you can see her skate. Wow, that's wonderful. Coach Staten Yates and the Northwest High Boys Tennis Team for being awarded the Metro Conference Tennis Team of the Year. Coach Matt Schaefer of Burke High for being named Metro Boys Tennis Coach of the Year. And last but not least, Aleah Farmer of North High and Thomas Vasquez of Burke High for being recognized as the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Currency Believers and Achievers State Winners. That concludes my happy remarks for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Vice President Ehrnberger.
Thank you, President Holman. I was just going to follow up on what Dr. Logan said about parent-teacher conferences. Not only don't believe your students when they say you don't have to come, but as a former teacher who spoke through the student who interpreted for me for their parent, sometimes the message that I thought I was delivering is not the message that the parent heard. So I was going to give Dr. Logan an opportunity to let us know about translators at all of the parent-teacher conferences. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that we were able to do, because we have fifty-two thousand students and many parents need translation, we are, we started two years ago, last year, with hiring some of our students to serve as translators. So we have a lot of bilingual folks that are in conferences, and I would just encourage folks to reach out to their school leaders for support with their conferences as needed.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first off, I recently got a chance to meet the new C E O of the Omaha Greater Chamber, Ms. Vida Johnson, or Jeffrey, and her husband, Tony Jeffrey. Excellent people, very, very good move for Omaha, and I just wanted to make sure that we welcome them as Board members. Had an opportunity to spend a little bit of time, just to kind of get an idea and ways we can partner and the vision for Omaha, growing the workforce and keeping our kids here, once they graduate from college or are doing trades. And so, just wanted to welcome that family. And then, on another note, we have some really excellent young people who are participating with the Empowerment Network. There's an Omaha Youth Three-Sixty component that has launched. It's a leadership academy, and we've been going for about three weeks now and have had excellent participation. So just wanted to thank those parents and families, because they've been very, very engaged.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Cassidy?
I just thought of a quick one. Thank you. So in the fall, I like to make sure I, once the schools all get going and everybody's kind of got the New Year started, I like to hit all my schools and kind of do a quick visit. And this year, I did not make it to, I have Spring Lake is in my district, and when they moved down to the South Roads swing space, I did not make it last year, just kind of time got away from me, and I had not yet made it to see them in action. And I went to Spring Lake, I think it was last week or maybe the week before, and I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to those folks down there at the good old, old, as I remember, South Roads Mall. I was
I clicked that, I did, I did. But then I clicked down there with the new chair. Alrighty, now moving on to board and superintendent comments. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, those here in attendance and those watching the stream from home. Beginning with tonight's agenda, our consent agenda includes the proposed negotiated agreement with the Eastern Nebraska School Security Union Local 28. We have two of their finest members here in attendance with us this evening. Safety is paramount for the Omaha Public Schools, and we appreciate the work of security staff throughout our district. Safety staff are often the first people you'll see when arriving on campus, and they contribute to our schools in many ways. We are happy to have this proposed agreement before our board this evening. Also before you is an updated agreement with our contracted bus service provider. But back to security, really want to thank our security team throughout our district. So many things don't happen because of the great relationships that they have with our young people and the cooperative work that they do with school staff. So we're very excited for this agreement and know that you deserve it. Many of our security staff serve as coaches. They are pastors in our community and community leaders in many other ways besides their work as security personnel in our school districts. For that reason and for many more, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Also before us today is an updated agreement with our contracted bus service, Student Transportation of America. The updated agreement accomplishes several things as we focus on providing safe, reliable trips to and from school for more than 20,000 children. Pending approval, our district will increase route payments to STA, allowing them to raise driver salaries. The updated agreement will require STA to invest in expanded customer service support for families. This reflects the value we place on communication, timely communication with our families, especially if there's going to be a change in the bus route. Alongside these investments, however, is accountability. The agreement increases amounts for liquidated damages should our contracted partner not meet these agreed-upon expectations. Our next subject is much lighter. Remember, family teacher conferences began last week for Omaha Public Schools, starting with our high school students. Mid-level conferences take place this week. Elementary follows the following week of October 24th. Conferences allow our schools to engage directly with families, partnering for success. Visit Omaha Public Schools on social media. We've posted tips to maximize conference visits from students and teachers. And for our middle school parents, please don't, do not believe your child when they say that you do not need to come in for a parent conference. You do need to come in for a parent conference. It's the most important in middle school. I see some of our teachers giggling in the back. Speaking of family and community engagement, this past Saturday was South High's Fiesta Latina. Marching bands were also out bright and early at Burke Stadium for the Omaha Marching Invitational. And with Halloween coming, the teacher's favorite day of the year, we have South High, which will have the Nightmare on L Street, sounds crazy. Benson High will have the Fall Fest. And Bryan High, their much celebrated and lauded Boo Best. Boo Fest, Boo Fest? Boo, Boo Fest. All have additional family events for fall and Halloween coming up. Make sure to take advantage of those. And thank you to all of the people who provide treats and a fun time, a safe time for our young people. Visit our district website, OPS.org, for complete details. Thank you to our student leaders and staff who make these events possible. We are proud to be a central part of the greater Omaha community. And congratulations are in order for several folks. Camille Kane of Lewis &amp; Clark Middle for advancing to the U.S. Skating Pairs Finals with the Omaha Area Skaters. This is the first time a team from Omaha area has qualified at this level of competition in several years. And if you go to YouTube and you put in Camille Kane's name, you can see her skate. Wow, that's wonderful. Coach Staten Yates and the Northwest High Boys Tennis Team for being awarded the Metro Conference Tennis Team of the Year. Coach Matt Schaefer of Burke High for being named Metro Boys Tennis Coach of the Year. And last but not least, Aleah Farmer of North High and Thomas Vasquez of Burke High for being recognized as the 2022-2023 Currency Believers and Achievers State Winners. That concludes my happy remarks for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Vice President Erdenberger.
Thank you, President Holman. I was just going to follow up on what Dr. Logan said about parent-teacher conferences. Not only don't believe your students when they say you don't have to come, but as a former teacher who spoke through the student who interpreted for me for their parent, sometimes the message that I thought I was delivering is not the message that the parent heard. So I was going to give Dr. Logan an opportunity to let us know about translators at all of the parent-teacher conferences. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that we were able to do, because we have 52,000 students and many parents need translation, we are, we started two years ago, last year, or with hiring some of our students to serve as translators. So we have a lot of bilingual folks that are in conferences, and I would just encourage folks to reach out to their school leaders for support with their conferences as needed.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first off, I recently got a chance to meet the new CEO of the Omaha Greater Chamber, Ms. Vida Johnson, or Jeffrey, and her husband, Tony Jeffrey. Excellent people, very, very good move for Omaha. And I just wanted to make sure that we welcome them as board members. Had an opportunity to spend a little bit of time, just to kind of get an idea and ways we can partner and the vision for Omaha, growing the workforce and keeping our kids here once they graduate from college or are doing trades. And so just wanted to welcome that family event. On another note, we have some really excellent young people who are participating with the Empowerment Network. There's an Omaha Youth 360 component that has launched. It's a leadership academy, and we've been going for about three weeks now and have had excellent participation. So just wanted to thank those parents and families because they've been very, very engaged.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Cassidy.
I just thought of a quick one. Thank you. So in the fall, I like to make sure I, once the schools all get going and everybody's kind of got the New Year started, I like to hit all my schools and kind of do a quick visit. And this year, I did not make it to, I have Spring Lake is in my district, and when they moved down to the South Roads Swing Space, I did not make it last year. Just kind of time got away from me, and I had not yet made it to see them in action. And I went to Spring Lake, I think it was last week or maybe the week before. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to those folks down there at the good old, old, as I remember, South Roads Mall. I was blown away, really amazed at how they are functioning in this building. I mean, it was well-oiled machine. And Principal Catlett, she's fantastic. She took me on a tour, and I'll tell you, South Roads was my hangout. That was my mall back in the day. And she took me up on this one part of like the stairs, and it overlooked all of the different classrooms. And I had this like moment where I was like, are we at J.C. Penney's? I mean, it was just surreal. But you would never know that you're in a former mall. I was just impressed with how organized and orderly. And I mean, they just moved in a way that the students, I mean, everything just moving along business as normal, even though they're obviously in a disruption while their building is getting renovated. Not an ideal situation, you know, no family wants to have their school uprooted and have to go to a swing space. But I just wanted to give a big shout out and warm fuzzy to those folks down at Spring Lake because they're just doing an amazing job. And I was literally, really just blown away. I wish I had gone there sooner, but yeah, it was great. So anyway, if you have a chance, stop down and see them.
Thanks, Ms. Cassidy. Okay, moving on now to public comment. Tonight, we have two speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mrs. Neelish Brash will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you also have 30 seconds remaining. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mrs. Neelish Brash, and she will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mrs. Neelish Brash as well. She will make sure that each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB 83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. And tonight, we do not have any requests. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium, and please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mrs. Neelish Brash will come and get them from you. It is now 6:24 PM, and our first speaker of the night is Mr. Donnie Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Holman, Dr. Logan, and staff. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson &amp; Co. Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You want me to spell it as well? Okay. Donnie, D-O-N-I-E, Johnson, J-O-H-N, S-O-N.
And then your address, please.
4928 North 52nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. You know, Dr. Logan, or Dr. Holman, ever since you mentioned Central Park to me, and I, it keeps coming to my mind about Central Park. That's how I went to school, and some of the things that come up. But in the Navy, they always keep telling us, never volunteer. But Ole Miss has its advantages as well. So I looked at your bus problem, and I thought about it because of Central Park, where I went to elementary school and studied many different things there. But in the meantime, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, we want to share some solution for bus drivers. I believe we, the people, can return this problem to Nebraska Unicameral. Number one, excessive DUI traffic citation. Number two, no proof of insurance traffic citation. Number three, SR 22 insurance. Number four, child support driver's license revoked. Number five, waiting in line mandatory health insurance to take driver's license for non-payment. I believe Nebraska Unicameral and State of Nebraska Senators should fix the problem they themselves have created for the citizens of Omaha, Nebraska. There are plenty of bus drivers willing to work, yet they have no driver's license. Why? Their driver's license is attached to one of those five categories I mentioned. With the help of God, I maybe, excuse me, maybe Governor Rickett can fix this problem and appoint the winner of the House of Representatives to Ben Sasse's Senate seat and the first African-American named Michaela City Prosecutor to fill House of Representatives seat and move State Fairback to Lincoln, Nebraska. Thank you, Dr. Logan. I still think you remind me of Booker T. Washington, we studied at this school. I don't know why, but then you, Dr. Holman, remind me of Howard University when I was up in New York, or excuse me, Washington, DC, studying with Elizabeth Arden. And that's who you remind me of.
Moving on to our next speaker of the night.
Let me put my glasses back on.
We have Anthony Zarziki.
Yes. I fumbled on his name earlier today, but I made sure that I was going to pronounce it correctly.
It's a hard last name.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Anthony J. Zarziki, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-J-Z as in zebra, A-R-Z as in zebra, Y-C-K-I, 1127 Marcy Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. I was a, this is going to be referring to item J 2B specifically, 5420, the Dating Violence Policy Update. I was a mandated reporter in college, and so I had a little bit of confusion when I read this policy. I guess the best way to explain it was, imagine myself being a teacher. As soon it comes to me, they're a minor. They say that they have been abused in a relationship. And so I go to the policy book, and I look up relationship violence. And it says, incidents of dating violence will be addressed as the administration determines appropriate within the scope and subject to the limits of the district's authority. And so I, it's two or three, I go and I send a message over to my supervisor saying this happened, and I call it a day. Alternatively, I hear about this story, and I look at the Child Abuse and Neglect Policy, which says that any employee has a reasonable cause to be that child has been subjected to child abuse or neglect or observed such child being subjected conditions which reasonably would result in child abuse or neglect shall report that abuse or neglect to Child Protective Services or the appropriate law enforcement agency. The report shall be made immediately or as soon as practical, but in no event shall such report be made later than 24 hours after becoming aware of such possible abuse. In addition, to calling CPS or law enforcement, the employee shall inform the building principal or immediate supervisor as soon as CPS or law enforcement has been notified. And so I guess there was kind of some confusion where if I was a teacher, I might make an honest mistake on who to report that first to regarding dating violence, which would include a minor then, and what the policy set out would actually be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Move approval.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Crackey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy.
You know my hand's going to go up. Yes, President Holman, I need to abstain from item I-6, approval of Claim C for my role on the OPS Foundation Board. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Crackey, seconded by Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Cassidy, excuse me, Ms. Cassidy is abstaining from item I-6, Claim C. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Neelish Brash.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. Moving on now to item J 1A, Approval of Fourth Amendment to Contract for Bus Transportation with Student Transportation of America for the 2022-2023 school year for $1.2 million. And we have Mr. Wakefield with us this evening. Good evening.
Morning, Dr. Holman, Ms. Erdenberger, Board of Education, Dr. Logan. We have before you the Fourth Amendment to the Contract with Student Transportation of America. This contract addresses driver's salary in an effort to support STA in providing enough drivers for us. In addition to addressing driver's salary, we also address liquidated damages to provide some skin in the game for STA. I probably shouldn't say it that way. That's probably not an appropriate phrase. But some steak in the game for STA as they continue to have. Additionally, we very specifically address communication with families and with the school district to improve that communication, as we recognize that as a big need for the district.
Are there any questions? Mr. Head.
Thank you, Dr. President Holman, and thank you for being here to walk us through this amendment and your work putting it together. It seems like this is the, I don't know, too manyth amendment that we've done with this specific contractor, and hopefully this one helps them solve their problems a little bit further. One of the things that I really appreciate is the additional communications in there. I think that'll go a long way, especially with the winter coming and the, you know, weather getting colder now. I think it's what, 20 degrees this morning of not having, hopefully not having students, you know, waiting outside, waiting for the bus for so long, either before or after school. So hopefully that goes a long way in helping make sure that people are notified in a timely manner and the ability to, you know, for them to pay their drivers a little bit more. Hopefully, it'll allow them to hire a couple more drivers. I know we're, I think we're all kind of expecting that, you know, unless a whole bunch of new bus drivers fall out of the sky overnight, it's probably not going to happen a whole lot. But at least on the communication side, I think this will make things a lot smoother going forward, at least through the rest of the semester. So I don't know if you have any additional thoughts, or, but thank you for your work on this, though.
Much like you, Mr. Head, I don't believe there's any magic solution that will ultimately fix our driver's solution. But this is an attempt to provide the most support to STA to allow them to meet their contractual obligations. It also holds them responsible for that as well. So it's not, it's us providing support, but also providing those natural consequences if they're not able to meet those contractual obligations.
Any other questions, Mr. Head?
No, thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. I know this is something that you spend a lot of waking and sleep, waking hours and sleepless nights thinking about, and I appreciate it. Just to follow up on what Mr. Head said, one of the features of this contract is for STA to hire more or contract for more of the phone bank company. Now, it's the same phone bank company, or whatever you call it, I'm sorry, that we already use. Are they already using it, but we're asking them to contract for more operators? Or what is happening?
That is correct. About seven years ago, the board asked the district to have one phone bank so that families weren't calling two different numbers to find out where their bus was. So we did move in that direction. STA is contractually obligated in the winter to provide for, to pay for four members of that phone bank to be dedicated to STA questions. This amendment doubles that from four to eight to reduce the wait time for parents and to speed up the timeliness of those answers.
That's great. Thank you very much. Another feature that was described was improved notification to the district if there is a, I don't even remember what it was, a bus route that's not going to be covered or something. How is that going to be different? Or is it mostly just a liquidated damages difference from what it has been before this?
In addition to increasing by percentage the amount for liquidated damages, we added a new liquidated damage, charging STA if they fail to notify the district 30 minutes before the arrival of, before our bus is supposed to arrive, if that bus is not going to arrive. That allows our schools to begin communicating with parents, allows our schools to make alternative plans, and allows the district to work with STA to make alternative plans if we know in a timely manner. Doesn't solve every problem, but communication is always a good start.
I have long confessed that math is not my strong suit, but I just did want to point out that we had a discussion where, while it's the great unknown, theoretically, the increased damages and the increased cost, especially if we don't get a lot more bus drivers, which we would love to have, basically washes out in the cost of this amendment. Is that roughly right?
The projected cost of this amendment is an additional $1.2 million if STA is able to meet its full contractual obligations. But because the district has already reduced the number of buses for STA at their request, we will not exceed the budget amount this year for STA expenses.
That's what I, thank you. And I was just going to give you an opportunity in those sleepless nights when you're making a mental list of what we could do differently to solve this problem. I didn't know if you wanted to share some of the wide-ranging possibilities that go through your mind, whether they are good ideas or not.
It's probably in our best interest if I don't share what goes on in my head.
They're that good, huh? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. I'll share that we are looking at our options and how we will need to proceed forward as a district. And we are looking at everything that's going to be on the table, from the requirements per state statute to everything else. So everything else in between. So I think it is important to note that unless we get more drivers, we are going to, it's going to be very difficult for us and to restate that for everyone. We can go even all the way to root cause and look at the number of CDLs that have been given out and realize that we, solving the problem is very, very difficult if you don't have people who are even getting CDLs. So those are commercial driver's licenses. So I think it's really important for us to move forward and try to support our contractor to the best of our ability, but to realize that this is a huge issue that is facing our community. And we are going to work internally and then invite some community stakeholders in, obviously to include parents and many others as we move towards a resolution, some forms of resolution to present to this Board of Education.
All right, any further questions, comments, colleagues? Thanks so much for being here with us tonight, Mr. Wakefield. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Contract for Bus Transportation with Student Transportation of America for the 2022-2023 school year as attached.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Head, seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Neelish Brash.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. Moving on now to information item, item J 2A, Early Literacy Update. And tonight, we have Ms. Miki Holbeck with us. Auntie, good evening. I know, I was going to say, your shoes make me happy. I love them.
Thank you. They make me happy, too. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, Dr. Logan. My name is Miki Holbeck, and I am delighted to be with you tonight. And on behalf of curriculum and instruction support, I would like to thank you for your unwavering literacy leadership as we continue the work of the Strategic Plan of Action Goal around early literacy. As a community, the stakeholders of the Omaha Public Schools have demonstrated that we are not deterred even by a pandemic in reaching our goal of ensuring that every child reads on grade level by third grade and develops the attributes of the portrait of a graduate. Our ability to instill the skills that children need to be successful readers, but also a joy about reading in our youngest students is what we will be judged by. And that is why I always suggest that, no matter what our role across the district, when someone asks you what you do, we say, I teach children how to read. So what is early literacy? Early literacy begins at birth. And before students even enter school, they are already developing the early literacy skills that will help them become successful readers and writers from the home literacy
and writers, from the home literacy practices that build oral language, to simply experiencing how we use writing and reading in our, to communicate in everyday life. We're looking forward to starting our home visits with elementary families soon, where families can share their hopes and dreams about their students with their teachers. And participating families will also get an early literacy kit with books and materials. The Omaha Public Schools also provides early literacy support through the Early Development Network for ages birth through five, and our early childhood classrooms are full of language and literacy. Early literacy matters a lot. Literacy is the means by which we learn all subject areas, and when we ensure that every child is reading on grade level by third grade, they will be able to successfully develop the attributes of a portrait of a graduate. In 2019, the International Literacy Association released a position paper called Children's Rights to Excellent Literacy Instruction, and it included this quote, "Excellent literacy instruction builds a strong foundation for learning, and in turn equips children to develop their potential, growing into adults who participate fully in their communities and society, enjoying the fullness that continuous learning brings to their lives." And I just, I want to point out, I love this picture so much. These are second graders at Wakanda Elementary School, and I do think that they really capture the promise of that real joy that we're building with our focus on early literacy in the Omaha Public Schools. The Strategic Plan of Action includes the early literacy goal listed on this slide. Annually, each school will have 4% more kindergarten through third grade students that will read on grade level as measured on standardized district assessments. In the first table, sorry, it's a little bit hard to see, but what it lists is that 84.1% of our elementary schools met this goal last year, year's, school year '21-'22. And the table underneath breaks it down by grade level. Again, that goal is 4% of additional students, reading above that 50th percentile, and you can see that we met that goal by at least double, and in some cases surpassed that goal by quite a bit, and we'll continue to track that progress each year. So I've talked just a little bit about what early literacy is, why it's important, and our progress, and now I'd just like to talk to you briefly about how we will continue this growth in the years to come. In 2020, our kindergarten through fifth grade classrooms began using Into Reading. It's a high-quality instructional resource, and it was chosen in part because of its strong, structured foundational skills, including phonics. As part of the adoption process, teacher representatives from each school serve as English Language Arts grade-level leaders. And these are classroom teachers who meet regularly and have helped us to develop our pacing and professional learning each year. They've really been at the heart of our implementation of Into Reading, starting in 2020 and continuing today. Here's what one of our grade-level leaders had to say about the alignment of Into Reading with the revised Nebraska English Language Arts standards. OPS is already ahead of the curve with the new state standards being implemented, in that with HMH, or Into Reading, we have already begun this process with extensive teacher training in our explicit and systematic teaching of foundational skills and ELA Each day, our literacy block starts with comprehension and vocabulary instruction to engage our students in discussions about text, asking them to collaborate, to analyze a section of the text, or to deepen their understanding or noticing of author's craft. They can write in their own My Books, they can underline important information, or perhaps a vocabulary word in context. And then after the whole group instruction, the teacher works with small groups or individual students to add additional supports for comprehension. And other students might be working with Lexia or Amira on their iPads, or reading independently. Next, students will engage in foundational skills, and this is an example, first-grade foundational skills lesson. The foundational skills starts with a wordwork warm-up, and you can see here, this one includes a review of high-frequency words that have been previously taught, and a short phonological awareness activity where students break words apart into sounds. After the warm-up, the teacher would engage in direct instruction in a phonics skill, followed by student practice. And after the whole group lesson, the teacher is able to work with small groups of children, reinforcing these foundational skills, and the other students would engage in independent practice, reading decodable text, or using a digital adaptive early literacy program such as iRead. I'd like to introduce you to a few of the Into Reading Alpha friends. There's Ozzy Octopus, Perla Porcupine, and Serena Seahorse to say hi. Alpha friends are just one of the many supports in Into Reading for our foundational skills. Our students practice writing and grammar every day during writing workshop, and we also hold a daily intervention block for students who need additional supports. And we will continue to provide ongoing professional learning with the advice from our grade-level leaders and coaching on implementing Into Reading to ensure that we meet the needs of every student. Over the course of the day, our updated literacy framework ensures that all kindergarten through fifth grade students spend over three hours learning and practicing, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And of course, those same literacy skills happen across the school day in all content areas as well. And lastly, I just wanted to share a couple of the additional supports for early literacy that are included in our Strategic Plan of Action. Omaha Public Schools is now an official reading recovery site. Nancy Mart, who is seen on this slide, is our reading recovery teacher leader, and she supports reading recovery implementation at Belvedere, Fontanelle, and Minna Lusa. Reading recovery is a short-time, early intervention for first-grade students, and students will spend 30 minutes daily with a specially-trained teacher. The lessons are tailored around what the students need and include time in text, time spent working with words, letters, sounds, and also writing. The Children's Literacy Initiative has been partnering with the Omaha Public Schools since 2019 to support our Strategic Plan of Action. CLI works with teachers in planning lessons that reflect the community we serve in the areas of literacy instruction, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Our work with CLI also includes support for enhancing classroom culture and literacy environment. And we know when we ensure that our classrooms are thriving, welcoming, literacy-rich communities where children feel a sense of belonging, we're planting the seeds that will continue to grow these successful and joyful readers into Omaha Public Schools graduates who are prepared for the rest of their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. Questions or comments, colleagues? Ms. Crackey?
Can you help me understand the writing activity in kindergarten? Have they had formal instruction when they pick up the pencil or crayon and they are doing the writing along with the lesson which you described? Are they able to, if we were doing a writing lesson in first grade, would they be doing that in kindergarten now, before they venture out and write comments on paper?
Um, are you-
Do they have any formal instruction in handwriting before they are writing?
Yes, yes. Yep, absolutely. Letter formation is a big part of the work that happens during the foundational skills. Thank you.
Thank you. I needed to know that as I watched it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Anyone else? Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. Thank you. I remember the little girl we had here from Edison, I think, a couple meetings, board meetings ago, and someone said, "Why do you like reading?" And she says, "'Cause it's reading." So hopefully, every single student will reach that point. My one question was, a couple questions. One is that we have a goal to be at, everybody in third grade reading at reading level. Do we, as someone who taught for a little bit of time at, frankly, Omaha Home for Boys, and we had a number of teenagers for whom reading was clearly a struggle, do we have a system, and again, I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but do we have a system, if we reach the third grade level and there are some students who aren't where they're supposed to be, to continue, and I don't want to use the word "track" either, but to work with or somehow develop those specific students? Do we know the kids who haven't achieved the goal that we have for all of our students?
I guess how I could answer that is to say that I know our partners in research and IMS are working on academic, or we have an academic dashboard that we continue to use that follows students through their entire academic career, which has that information on it. And part of school improvement planning and the meetings that every school is having around school improvement planning include reviewing that data and making sure exactly what you're saying, is that no students are falling through those cracks. But I'll let Donna talk.
And as Miki's talking about early literacy, she introduced all of this idea with Into Reading, which came with a plethora of interventions. And so we can take that data and see what each student needs, and all the way through elementary school, we continue to match what they need to their instruction. So we have adaptive resources like Lexia to help support, but there are specific teaching interventions that come with Into Reading that are very laid out.
No, no, I appreciate that. And by having that third grade goal, I suppose, it means we do focus on which kids haven't achieved it and can employ some of those interventions. Looking at the improvement, looking at it on each school basis, I just wanted to give that a shout-out, because it's one thing to say that the, you know, every third grader in the district is, you know, or X percent of the third graders in the district are reading at grade level. It's a totally different thing to say that at each school, we are accomplishing that. And so I know that's something that the board before me worked very hard to make sure that that kind of equity was being addressed, so I really appreciate that. Looking at the reading recovery, you mentioned that that's happening, I believe, at three schools. Is my memory correct that those are our three turnaround schools? Okay, thank you very much. And last but not least, we just approved an RFP award to the Children's Literacy Initiative, which you referred to at the end. And I would just point out that, at the request of one of the board members, we got a list of, or a larger description of that, and it looks like it's expanding on almost a yearly basis. We're adding 18 more schools, '23-'24, that would be next year, but we're adding more and more schools each year to get the benefit of that. Great, thank you. Well, like I said, I hope, I hope everybody likes reading, "'cause it's reading." Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Great information, and thanks for all of your hard work. I have to say, I love when I come in the dining room and I hear Amira, and she says, "Would you like to read me a story?" I just want to go, "Yes." But seriously, all of the programs that are part of this, Amira and iRead are all fantastic. If you've ever had a chance to see any of these, I know they are a great support to the work that you're doing. My question is, there was a piece on here that spoke a little bit about the EL, the English language learners. Can you tell a little bit about how those folks come into play and what supports are in play for those learners that English is not their first language?
Absolutely. So our Into Reading itself has all sorts of scaffolds for English learners. In every lesson in the teacher's guide, there's additional supports for English learners. We also have a option for small group instruction called tabletop lessons that are also, are used by our English language teachers with students as well, but our general education teachers use those with all students. And as we know, what's great for English learners is great for all students, and all of our English learners are general education students first, and so we make sure that the scaffolds that we're providing for all students in our classroom are really what's best for English learners as well. But there are some targeted supports right in the teacher's guide, and we use those as well.
And in addition, we did have a team of talented writers representing our English learners. They wrote a companion guide, which added additional options to be used for our students that tie our current adopted curriculum to additional strategies. So we have lots of supports that we continue.
Great, thank you. Ms. Crackey?
We just haven't, we haven't mentioned summer school yet, and I know that you continue with the children and their families so that they do attend summer school. What is the percentage of the children who need to, I don't know if you know this, who need to attend summer school and the parents are willing? Do we have some who just don't want to go to summer school or want that to happen? If so, do you know, sort of, how many might we have? I hope they all go.
This is where I look back for assistance.
We have, we do offer our next level learning to almost all of our students. We start off with the ones who need it the most, and then as we have folks who accept and don't accept, we expand that. One of the challenges that we have for our families is that, while some folks don't, maybe not, don't attend, is because of childcare in the summertime. So there's, if you don't have regular childcare in the summertime, summer, summer learning is partial day. Families, you know, as many of us know, back in the day, you got on the Greyhound bus or your family drove you to wherever your aunt or grandmother could keep you for the summer for two weeks, or three weeks, or eight weeks, in my case. But, so, you know, we have, there's some number of that that goes on, but we really do work hard to get the families who need it, need to have summer learning. Schools really do, really, schools always do all the heavy lifting, you know? That's just what it is. And schools work really hard to get the children in for summer learning, you know? And some of the things we see, Ms. Crackey, is, you know, summer learning, it starts off, people, everybody gung-ho, and then by Friday, everybody's got a better offer, you know, swimming pool. So, you know, I'm just being honest with you about how summer learning happens, right? Because it's not, summer learning is not required, and there is really no way to require it. We don't have a statute to require it, like some states do have that. We don't have that in our state. But that's what schools do. They work really hard. Some schools will have intercession, where kids can come during Thanksgiving week, or sometimes during the winter break, and a lot during the, in the spring holiday. We have many schools, especially for our English language learners, our migrant program, really just remarkable folks who come in and, you know, work and have the children come in. But that's one of our things. But one of the great things about us having, our children having connectivity all the time, well, until 11:00 PM or midnight, is that they have devices where they can continue their learning on their own, because of adaptive, the adaptable resources that we have that, you know, have children enter where they are and helps them move up levels, but seize if they're having difficulty, and then reinforces those skills that they may be not doing well on. So we have those, you know, that students can use, sometimes in school, sometimes, you know, mostly also at home. So we have, you know, continue to invest in those resources so that learning can continue even though children may be at home or in the summer. So we are, you know, continue to do that. I thought that Mrs. Erdenberger's question was really about kids who, in the middle grades, and then as we go into middle school, who need reading support. And we do, I was going, I was looking at you, Susan, I mean, Mrs. Christgofferson, to talk about maybe perhaps Read 180 or whatever it is that you want to talk about, middle grades.
Thank you for that opportunity. I was thinking about that as well. Yes, we do continue to make sure we're identifying and supporting students even as they reach middle level, because even if, sometimes our students with mobility, or they've moved into the Omaha Public Schools, we want to make sure that we're still continuing to support.
Public Schools, we want to make sure that we're still continuing to support. And so we do utilize System 44 and Read 180 at our middle level. And we also do that also at our high school level and continue to add that as an elective credit. But it's continuing to provide them supports that they need, middle school through high school. And then we're currently working on a K-12 literacy framework to ensure that we're embedding literacy in all subject areas and not just during the reading time. So.
Mrs. Crackey?
I was just thinking when Dr. Logan gave her overview of all that, which was really informative for the public, because they don't know how many things we do, how many things are available, and OPS for one thing. And when she mentioned Grandma's House, I'm thinking, well, if she got to Grandma's House early enough, then she could go to the grade school that's associated with Grandma's House. That just might work out. I don't know. I'm sure there are lots of innovative things that people use to get to summer school. But I was just thinking that would be a good thing.
They did not have that in Crawfordsville, Arkansas, where my grandmother lived, population 653. So.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, President. Dr. Holman, and thank you for the information, for your work in this area. So I'm looking at slide five here, the percent change for the, for the grades broken down. So can you explain a little bit how you got, how you got that number? Is it looking at the students who are, you know, at or below the 50th percentile from the first test of the year through the last test of the year, and the percentage of those who moved above? Is that how you calculated the 30, 27, 8.7 and 8? Or how'd you get to that number?
So we worked with our friends in our research area. And it is my understanding that yes, that is exactly what you just described is how that goal is measured.
Perfect. And then I think we've been doing this since 2019 as a program, correct?
The-
The, the, at least had, had the, you know, reading proficiency in the strategic action plan in this program specifically. So do we have some historic data as far as, you know, could we look at growth of the K through third grade, you know, starting in 2019, 20? Obviously, there's a pandemic in there. So it's a little bit difficult to look at year after year. But are we trending in the right direction? Or what, what's it look like? What kind of historic data do we have there?
So again, I would have to defer to our friends in research, and we would be happy to gather that information for you. I, I talked to Mr. Scott Schmidt-Bonnie about the slide that I presented, and he gave me some talking points for it. But he's definitely the, the expert on that information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, my final question. I'm gonna call it for my, oh, sorry, Mr. Tealyn, I apologize.
So reading recovery is at our turnaround schools?
Correct.
And the rest of the, it's, I was getting the impression that the rest of those interventions are really available at all of our elementary schools. Is that correct?
Correct.
So can you talk a little bit about how we block out that time that you talked about for individual interventions?
Sure. We have time allotments, which are the recommendations for how we structure our instructional minutes throughout the day. And on those time allotments, we've listed a 30-minute intervention block for grades, for the elementary grades. And then it's really up to the schools to ensure that that is scheduled into the daily schedule. We recommend that they stagger it just to allow for additional supports if possible. For instance, school that might have a literacy facilitator that might be able to support, that way they could support in additional classrooms. But that 30 minutes is designed specifically for intervention and occurs daily.
Understood. Thank you. I think, I think the only other question, maybe I got, maybe you don't have the answer to this, but what, what testing are we using? Are we using state standardized testing or some internal testing?
The, the, the slide with, that was MAP data.
It's MAP data?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Tealyn, we, the state, we, you know, will, we do have the state results. They are embargoed. So I'll be sharing those with the Board of Education as soon as the embargo is lifted.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one simple question. I think you mentioned the program started in 2020?
The inter reading was implemented in 2020. Yep.
So obviously, you know, we went through a pandemic. Can you explain what changed from that? Because I'm sure you didn't hit the ground running, or you started hitting the ground running, then you had to recoil, especially in March.
Yes. And I, trying to implement a brand-new, high-quality instructional material in the middle of a pandemic was certainly an opportunity for us to really reconsider a lot of things. We had already, before the pandemic, had been meeting with our implementation committee about things that we knew that we wanted to shift in terms of the literacy framework itself. I mentioned how, you know, we increased the time for some of the components of the literacy block. We were already pretty well positioned to hit the ground running. And then we had to make some shifts for our different delivery models. We ended up having several different literacy frameworks, depending on whether we were remote or in our family 3-2 model, and then fully implementing. The grade-level leaders helped us a lot. Those were the classroom teachers that we really rely on. We have representation from each school. And so we really get their feedback. What's working? What, you know, what do you need more supports with? What, what do we need to tweak? How, you know, how are your students responding to this? So it was definitely not what we expected. We were so grateful for the digital resources that Dr. Logan mentioned, because we did feel that because we had access to the devices and some of those pieces as well, that really helped us kind of leverage those, those pieces perhaps more intensely than we would have been able to. So there were some benefits to some of the things that happened around that time. But, but I would say that we have been feeling that our implementation is just getting stronger and stronger each year.
Do you think that the learning gap that you were initially planning for was a little bit more difficult to navigate when you were going back into the classroom? Because you're actually engaging that student, and you're actually knowing if the student's actually able to keep up in the classroom. I'm just very curious with that, as, as we start to see year after year, this two years of a pandemic remote is really going to start showing, you know, did we really make gains? Or did we prevent a gap of three or four? I don't know. Like, what are teachers saying in the classroom on when they were doing remote? Was it?
It's funny how that seems like it was a long time ago, but it really wasn't. I would say that, you know, the, the impacts of school not being in person, we can certainly see that. Every teacher that I talk to, no matter where, talks about that. And that's what I see when I visit schools, that there is an opportunity for a lot of catching up throughout the years. The great thing about little children and big children is that they are resilient and they will rise to the expectations of the folks who are in charge of making sure that they set those expectations. But to your question, yes, the gap certainly widened. It widened more for students who live in poverty and students who, for whom English is a second language. We are preliminarily kind of looking at our data to dig into a little bit more to see what the gaps are. If you look at children who stayed remote all of the 2021 year or came in person, and it's, it is very difficult to tease that out, because people got sick and it's very difficult to even determine. We can look at, you know, just by the category that they were in. But then there are all these other confounding variables that we see in the data. But certainly, yes, we see the, you know, the gaps. One of the reasons that we are now pretty much a year-round school district is because we see that the students, many students can benefit from having school for more than 170 days. So that's certainly something that we see or want to come during the breaks. And we're very excited about bringing our tutoring RFP and that to this board very soon. Thank to, thanks to Mrs. Kramer, who has been like working, I don't know, day and night on making sure that there are multiple options for children to have tutoring, all the different people who can tutor, all the different places children can be tutored. The music opportunity, the vocal opportunity, even for children who need additional physical act, there's something for every. So we're very excited about that. That'll be coming to you. It's a huge lift that, and she has a team that's working alongside with her. But that work, it will be impressive for this community and is the next step. One important thing, and I'm sorry to go on, but is that, that I think is really important in the timing, is that we also, it's not just the children needing to be ready to receive it, or, you know, having the need. We also need to have adults who are also ready to, to do extra work, right? Although, you know, we're going to be paying people and all of that. But everybody's been through something that's been pretty significant. And so the intersection of, or the coming together of the points where we have a really solid program built, we will have adults, enough adults available. We are actually going to use our student interns as well to provide tutoring. We surveyed all of our students, well, fourth grade through 12th grade, to see what kind of a tutor they wanted. And one thing we discovered was that kids didn't care whether it was a teacher or someone else who had knowledge in the subject matter. They, some of them just said, I just simply want a human to tutor me. And some said, because we were not going to pursue anything online. But some kids said, I want an online tutor, right? So I'm very excited about bringing that forth to you all. I believe we're going to do it in the November 14th meeting. But do want to thank Suzanne Kramer and the team that's been working with her to get that lifted. It is, it is, you will be, I think you will be impressed.
Thank you. And quickly, hopefully it's quickly, for those, no, you're fine. For those parents who are interested in, or who may not know how to locate what grade level standards are, or what high-frequency words are, or where they could get them, or even what reading on grade level means, where would they might be able to get that information?
So we always recommend that our families reach out to their child's teacher, who can provide them with all of that information and, and tailor it to specifically what that child needs. And Dr. Logan called out the conferences that are coming up, and our families and teachers will have an opportunity to explore that. We have information that is available for the teachers to provide at those conferences as well. But, but don't wait. You know, reach out to your child's teacher, and they can provide you with some, there are, inter reading, of course, has family information as well. And when children bring their devices home, the families are able to log in and see what the work that the children are doing, which is another great reason to have those digital devices. It really creates an understanding of what the literacy work that the children are doing during the day, and then can reinforce when they are at home.
Would you say that again, that parents can log in?
Yep, log, yep. Yes.
All right, great. Any final questions for our guests tonight? Great. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you so much for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item J2B, updated policies 5408, 5419, 5420, 5424, 5426, 5501, and 5505. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, President Holman. I'm just gonna run through each of these briefly. 5419 is student privacy and protection. There's, these are really mostly just cleanup and, and sort of technical changes, things like changing from parents to parents and guardians, those kinds of changes. So no real substantive changes there. 5408, health screening. Again, mostly, I think we have technical changes there. But I'm also going to say that it looks like part of that policy did get left out in the final version that got posted on the agenda. So we will have an updated version that comes in for first reading that might be, that will certainly be a little different. But I don't think that there's any additional changes that you're going to see. 5420 is dating violence. And again, mostly, this is, this is not substantive. It's mostly about clarification and getting the languages as clear as possible. You know, to speak a little bit to our commenter today, this policy is actually a little bit broader even than CPS mandatory reporting. So there might be things that don't necessarily constitute abuse and neglect that still do our behaviors and patterns that we would want to have reported, and in fact, are mandated to be reported. And the, and the reporting lines are similar. So first of all, CPS reporting, we are always going to have that mandatory reporting directly to CPS. But there, they're also going to have a similar, you know, line within their building of who they're going to contact on these sorts of things. And so whether it's specific conduct that's related to dating violence, or, you know, abuse and neglect, all of that's going to get reported probably to the same person within the building. And that, and then they'll take it from there. But again, most, no real substantive changes there, just clarification, language. I think the only substantive change that we had was at the very end of that section, that there was just some additional opportunity for meeting with the principal or other persons for questions, if parents have questions about any reporting that's happened. 5424, we're actually, regarding school uniforms. And this language was added in 2017. It made a lot of sense at the time. It hasn't been used. We, it doesn't really apply now. And so we're going to just go ahead and get rid of that policy. 5426 is about student data. And there's lots of places where student data is, is addressed in the policies. This is really about how people from the outside of the district can get student data and how they can request it. And the only change there was we just wanted to make a little bit more clear how that happens. So we added some language about who you, who you can reach out to to get that information, or request that information, anyway. Policies 5501 and 5504 are regarding transportation. And really, again, these are just policies that don't necessarily, I'm actually going to take these one at a time. So 5501 is about bus stops outside the city limits, and it's just really not applicable anymore for our district, the way that it operates. And 5504, I'm sorry, that was 5501, this is 5504, is really just a restatement of state law. So it completely still applies to us in the exact same ways. State law requires certain transportation for, for our students, and we'll continue to follow it. It's just repetitive to have it also in our policies. So we're removing that from our policies as well. And with that, I'll take any questions now. And of course, we will have additional opportunities when these come back on first and second reading.
Mr. Snow?
Assuming we will upload the correct policy on the-
When we come back for first reading, we'll have a, an uploaded correct policy.
Will we be able to do that before, just in case if somebody's watching and wants to look at that? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure if we can or not. And once we've put this agenda out, I'm not sure if we're supposed to change it, or if we can change it. But I will check into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice President Erdnberger?
I just wanted to confirm something. Mr. Tealyn said with respect to policy 5420, dating violence. And I think he may have said it, but I just want to reinforce what he said. And that is, the language in there is largely statutory, if I recall. So again, to our speaker's comments earlier, there wasn't a lot of latitude for conforming that language to some of the other policies, as I understand it, because it's a statutory requirement that it read that way. So I appreciate the earlier comments, but-
Unfortunately, that happens in a few places in our policies where we're, we have overlapping statutory requirements that don't let us have sort of one big cohesive policy that addresses subject matter.
We'll take it up with the policy committee, Mr. Head.
Yeah, this is legislative, if you may, legislative committee, right. Yeah. And this is one of them. But yeah. this is one of them. But yeah, there, there is some overlap here. But I, I think that the lines of communication should be relatively straightforward for our staff.
Okay. Thanks so much, Mr. Tealyn. And you're up again for item J2C, policy committee update.
I, and that's, those are the policies that we've been working on. But I thought we, I guess, maybe I missed it. I thought today we had a second reading. Did we not have a second reading? Or it was on, no, right. It was on consent. We're good. So yes, those are the policies that we've been working on in the last couple of policy meetings. Nothing further to report.
Okey dokey. Great. Thank you so much. Moving on now, excuse me, moving on to receipt of reports. And we have one report tonight on the agenda, item K1, C-BIC update for Phase II bond programs, September 2022. Moving on now to closed session, Vice President Erdenberger.
I move, excuse me, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the Superintendent, Mr. Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, real estate, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice.
Thank you. I have a motion to go into closed session by Ms. Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Head. Roll call, please.
Craig Key.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose of a closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the Superintendent, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, real estate, pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:24 PM.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 7:56 PM. Meeting adjourned.